We are coming out of closed session. A direction was given to legal counsel and staff as to what to do on item number 3A. We are now going to adjourn the special meeting December 21st at 6:00 PM. And then, we are now going to move into the regular meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, Wednesday, December 21st, 2016, at 6:30 PM. I'd ask once again, since a lot of you have shown up, if you have a cellphone, please silence it at this time. If you have to take a phone call, please move outside. To take that phone call is not to disturb the meeting. If you'd all stand with me right now, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. And Georgiana Fieker will call.
Director Dionne Whitman?
Here.
Vice President Larry Duncan?
Here.
President Seth Perola?
Here.
Director Cliff Jacobson?
Here.
Director Bill Kellogg?
Here.
Thank you, Georgiana. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the General Manager. And this is my last and final duty for 2016 as the President. And he will go from there.
I will now accept nominations for the office of President for tonight's meeting in 2017.
I nominate Bill Kellogg.
I nominate, or Bill Kellogg as well.
I nominate Dan Whitman.
And I nominate Larry Duncan. But we take the first one first, so.
Do I hear a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
I don't think it has to be seconded.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Director Kellogg as President, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to the new President, Bill Kellogg.
You want to stay there, Bill, or you want to move over?
No.
Okay.
I don't need to move anywhere. Feel comfortable here, closer to the bathroom.
Yeah, there's his gavel will pass down the...
Pass the hammer to you there.
Okay, the election of the... Pardon?
Want to try it out, make sure it works?
No.
All right.
Hopefully you don't hear much from them. Elections for Vice President, do we have nominations for Vice President of the Board?
I nominate Dan Whitman.
I nominate Cliff Jacobson. Actually, I decline. Thank you.
I think Cliff will decline.
He's been here a little longer.
I think he will, he'll decline too, although I don't know.
I don't hear any other nominations, I guess I'm stuck.
Well, you've got to make sure they vote you in.
Yeah, that's right.
I move nominations to see if it's closed.
Second for the closed nominations? Do we have a second?
You don't have to have one for that.
I'd like to have a second.
Okay, I second it.
Thank you. All in favor of Cliff being Vice President?
Aye.
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 Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much. Well, we start in at a call to order. And does anybody... Oh, we silence cellphones, we've already been through that. President Kellogg, we have to appoint Secretary and Treasurer. Right, okay. Yeah, it's been a while since I've done this. Okay, appointments, Treasurer.
Nominate Kevin Phillips.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. All in favor of Kevin Phillips being the Treasurer, say aye.
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 I nominate Georgiana Barea.
Barea.
As Secretary.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any more nominations? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you have any doubt that that would happen?
Approval of consent calendar, does anybody want to take any part of the consent calendar out for separate action?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Second, any more talk about the consent calendar? Anybody want to comment or anything?
Thank Director Ken Hunt for his years of service and all the good things that he brought to the district. That's an order, that's pretty much what the resolution is, but it needs to be said out loud.
Does anybody in the public have any comments, anything on the consent calendar? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
We'll call.
We'll call on that one.
Has to be roll call? Roll call, okay. Georgiana?
Director Whitman?
Aye.
Vice President Duncan? Oh, I'm sorry, I messed up, yeah.
Director Duncan.
Director Duncan.
Aye.
Director Collett?
Yes.
Vice President Jacobson?
Aye.
And President Kellogg?
Aye.
Public parpiss... Our public participation. Individuals will be given an opportunity to address the board regarding matters not scheduled on the agenda. Although the board cannot take action on any matter not on the agenda, comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Opportunity for public comment on agenda items will be provided at the time they are discussed by the board with comments limited to five minutes per... Does anybody have public comments that is not on the agenda? Okay, looks like we move on. Oh, this is what a good portion of our audience is here for today. Employees Retirement Program, explanation of fee deductions, an update from Certified Financial Planner, and Trevin...
Treasurer.
Treasurer, that's right. Probably by the halfway through here, I'll start saying things the way they're supposed to be said.
Yeah, I'll introduce this topic, so. So it was about two months ago, the... One of our employees came to me to talk about some of the fees that were being deducted in his statement, and how they were calculated, and what the process was of how the calculation was established. And this is something, from our standpoint as a district, we don't see. These fees are directly related to each individual retirement account, and they're stated on the... Each individual's retirement statement. The fees can be different from one retiree to the... Or from one employee to the other, based on how they're having their retirement plan handled. So some have managed accounts, which means they have higher fees for that service, and some have non-managed accounts, which means there's lower fees for that service. So my advice to this employee was to actually contact our financial planner, which was Rick Moots, to find out exactly how they are calculated, and what the fee is. Through that investigation, we have found that, over the past three years, that it's actually been charged... They've been charging each individual higher than what was contracted to be charged out of their account. And so Rick, our financial planner, took this, took the bull by the horn, and went back to... Let me just give you... Back up just one step. Our retirement plan has two facets. There's the retirement... There's a financial planner, who's Rick, who's kind of the local guy who gives our employees education. So we'll sit down with them and do a financial plan. It's kind of the face of the retirement plan. And then there's the backend, who handles all the actual money, fees, transactions, and holds all of the funds. And that company's called FTJ Fund Choice. So Rick went to... Right back to FTJ Fund Choice, and told them what he has discovered. They got on the ball and started to find out how to rectify the situation. They were... The way that they rectify the situation, and I think that they'll probably get into a little more detail than I can tell you, is they actually went all the way back to the inception, recalculated every fee that was taken out. So they actually, I think they refunded the fee, and then recalculated the fee based on the new, or the actual fee that was supposed to be taken out. We've asked Rick to come today to present to you guys, to the board, and then also, I believe, a person from FTJ Fund Choice is here also, to talk to the board about the situation. So at this time, what I'll do is turn it over to Rick, and then Rick can kind of take it from where I have kind of started the explanation.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Board, for allowing me to attend tonight's meeting. Again, my name is Richard Moots, I'm a Certified Financial Planner, been practicing up here on the Ridge about 17 years. I've been in the area about 30 years. I'm very appreciative. Tonight, Dean Cook, who's the President of FTJ out of Ohio, was kind enough to get on a plane this morning, about 14 and a half hours ago, to be here tonight. So I thank him for that. He will have some opportunities to answer questions as to calculations and things of that nature. What I just wanted to do real quick is a quick overview, and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions anybody has. I was the advisor, I signed everybody up. We used an application that basically was not the right application. Nobody overcharged, no one was being dishonest. Fund Choice charged the fee that was on that application. Fortunately, it was the wrong application. When it was brought to my attention, like Kevin said, immediately told George about it and started contacting Fund Choice and figured out, how are we going to get this fixed? Again, well, I'll let Dean go over how that's going to happen, and when that's going to happen and such. Basically, since this plan started, been weeding with everybody on a quarterly basis at all three departments, the office, the yard, and the water treatment plant. I do that for an hour in each meeting, do it four times a year. At those meetings, it basically kind of go over what's going on in the market, you know, anything that you should know about, how do certain things work, what can I do to help? Some of the things I always really emphasize in these meetings is, you know, estate planning. Are you talking with the right folks about the insurance that's available at PID? Please come see me, my office is on the Skyway. And quite a few folks have, about 82% of the participants have met with me on a one-on-one basis. I've met everybody face-to-face, again, doing these meetings. These meetings that I offer at my office, or here, or at your facility, there's no cost for that. Financial plans, do social security planning, life insurance planning, 529, which is college planning, budgeting, how to get out of debt. I'm not a debt consolidation person, nor do I want to be, but what is an efficient way to get out of debt? All these services I provide to every participant and their family members at no charge. Yes?
Can you just keep it to the fees?
Sure.
No sales pitch, just talk about the fees?
Okay. So as I mentioned, the error was made. The fees were overcharged. Fund Choice is working on getting them put back into the accounts as soon as possible, as soon as all the calculations are done. Every single participant had 78 of those transactions, that's a lot of calculations to do. So we're getting through that, and as soon as it's done, they'll get their fees, they'll get the appreciation, and it'll be fixed. As soon as they, we, again, knew about it, we jumped on it and tried to get it fixed as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Yes.
Rick, can you just tell them the amount that was overcharged?
The total amount for everybody?
No, just the... What the percentage should have been versus the percentage that was charged?
As Kevin mentioned earlier, there's basically two facets to the plan. Basically, if you want to manage it yourself, it's 3/4 of a percent, or if you wanted to have a strategist, it's 1.25%. Unfortunately, due to this application, 0.3 of a percent was overcharged day one. There was actually an additional, a few folks, that there was another 0.1 of a percent charged on a couple people. So I guess in round figures, it's about 0.3 of a percent was overcharged for the 39 months.
Any more questions? Thank you.
Oh, I see a lot of...
Let's have FTJ explain, and then we can maybe open it up.
So again, Dean Cook.
Rick, can you sit down, please?
Yeah, absolutely, I was just going to introduce him.
Okay, we'll introduce him, and you can introduce him in a minute.
Okay.
I would like everyone to be aware of this letter. I just received it tonight, a photocopy. Is it possible to put it on the screen?
I don't have a...
Do we have it on the screen?
No.
We were going to address this when we were done with that.
Let them give their presentation.
Employees already know it, because they signed it. We all got a copy.
We were going to address this letter when these folks were done.
Well, nobody's told me anything about this. This important thing is the letter with all the signatures of employees. I would also, if employees don't mind, so the rest of the audience understand, I know most of the employees, can you stand? I don't... You don't need to say your name or anything, you just stand, so you have an indication of how many people are here tonight, to see how this is going to go. And I will give you opportunities to ask questions. Can the employees in the audience stand? Thank you very much. Now you can introduce... The fellow's traveled so long and hard to get here.
Again, Dean Cook, President of FTJ Fund Choice. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. So, as Rick mentioned, when we received the application, we received it... On the application, it read 30 basis points FTJ fee, 75 basis points for the advisor, or 125 basis points on the advisor. That's what we entered into our system, and that's what was calculated. Apparently, there was a misunderstanding when the application was created, and that was the confusion, where they wanted a max of 75 basis points, or 75... 0.75%, 1.25%. It was unfortunate, I'm sorry, it happened, but it was an honest mistake. Once Rick brought it to our attention, we went back and we did all the calculations by month, across roughly 50 participants, reducing the advisory fee that was charged by 30 basis points. We have those calculations currently. We plan to put them back into the account by the end of the year. In addition to that, there is lost performance because of the overcharge. We have calculated that as well. We are going to credit that back to the individual participants.
That was going to be one of my questions, but you did answer it.
I think Rick touched on that at the beginning there.
I think Kevin wants to say something.
Yeah, so will each one of the participants have the ability to see the calculation that was performed?
They will see the calculation of the credit, the 30 basis... 3/10 of a percent. I'm sorry, I talk in basis points, so 3/10 of a percent per month back into the account. They could see each individual month that it goes back in. That will be provided. As far as performance, what we did was, we looked at the individual participants' return since inception for that period, or for that period of time. So let's say it was 8% for example. And then, we took it... We basically took that 8% annualized, and then basically applied it back to each individual period. So someone... The first month when it was credited, so the first month that there was an error, and say that error was $200, they would receive, and their return since inception has been 8% annualized, they would get 8% in that first 12 months, 8% in the second, so on and so forth. So it is very error-prone to go back and try to calculate the actual performance by month for each particular account. So we took, again, their annualized return, or their inception-to-date return, annualized, and then applied it monthly across the board. So it's the most efficient and accurate way to calculate, you know, a return on an over type of charge.
So these individual employees have the opportunity to invest in different programs? It would have brought them different rates of return back, is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, so on our platform, we have a number of institutional money managers that the clients can go to, or they can choose to build portfolios themselves, and choose individual funds themselves. So there is a wide variety of dispersment of returns, the highest being about 9.5% and the lowest being about negative 1.2%. So it's not... Basically, when we went back and credited, you know, the individual who received, had a 9% annualized rate of return over the past four years, you know, we credited him back that, you know, at a 9% rate. You know, if the individual who lost money, we just decided not to worry about that.
What's the average dollar amount we're talking about here, per employee, roughly?
Well, it's... The average dollar amount, I mean, it's 45, right around $45,000 in total. So at 50 participants, it's about 900 a participant.
Over the 36 months?
Over the... Over 36 months. Actually, it's over 40 months.
About $900.
39.
Over those months.
Yeah, 39 months.
So the error over 39 months is about $900 average per employee?
Correct.
That would be credited back to them now?
Correct.
And it's going to be credited back with, if they were good investors, the high end, and if they lost money, you're not going to take that off of them?
Correct.
Is there any more questions from the Board?
No, I... Do we have a spokesperson from the employees that is going to be...
I'm going to ask them to ask some questions, as soon as the Board's done.
Mr. President, may I ask a question?
Sure.
How do you track employees that may have left during the 40-month period?
Well, we have, I mean, obviously, we have record of them being employees, and we have record of their account balances, and we have... So we'll basically send it to... You know, if the employee has left, we'll send it back to where we sent the last transaction. And if they reject it, the company who received the last transaction, then we'll contact the individual.
Okay.
Does anybody in the Board, or employ... You guys, management, have any more questions?
I had a question of Rick.
Okay.
Somebody told me that they were very conservative, an employee who was very conservative, and he said that he lost money in his account. Is that possible?
Yes, it is.
You want your conservative?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't think that would be possible. I... To me, conservative means I want interest only on my account, so my principal doesn't get touched.
There wasn't an interest-only option.
Oh, there wasn't? Oh, okay. Now, I understand it then, thank you.
One more question. The fee calculation, can you explain how fees are calculated on a monthly basis?
Sure. So we use the average daily balance of the account. So basically, each day of the month, we take a snapshot of the portfolio balance, and come up with an average daily balance for that particular period. Then, we multiply that by the fee that's being charged, and then multiply that by the days in the period divided by 365. So it's an average daily balance calculation. It would be similar to how a bank would calculate interest. You know, they don't calculate it on the end of the period, or the beginning of the period. They take an average daily balance, and that's industry standard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody from the audience, employees, owners of the district, like to ask these fellows some questions now? Somebody should break the ice, I think you'd want to say something.
I'll have it explained. I'd like to ask if any of the employees feel that this has been properly addressed for them, or if they feel that there's still an issue.
I'll jump...
See some head-shaking notes. I think there's...
I think the letter is perfectly clear that you were provided with. It was signed by every single employee that is here, that's not out on sick leave, that we were able to get a hold of. I think it puts it, it's where we stand. Unfortunately, our faith was lost. I don't see that being gained back.
Bill, how would you perceive that you proceed from here? What would you like to do?
Right there on that paper, I would like a third party to come in and evaluate each and every person's account, to make sure that what these guys calculate is indeed making us whole. And then I would like the Board to proceed to look into a different retirement provider.
Is it typical for...
Just a minute, I wanted to explain, we didn't get your letter until I walked in here tonight. I didn't know that this thing even existed. And that's one reason why some of us haven't even had time to read it, actually.
Let me jump in.
I... I'll jump in on that.
Okay.
I just gave this to Kevin and George this afternoon. They had no information regarding it, up until the time I presented it to them. We held meetings with the employees, and this is what everyone came up with, and this is exactly how they're feeling right now.
Thank you.
I have a question, Bill.
Go ahead.
How is this typically done with this arrangement? Is there like a representative from the employees that work with you, Kevin, and then you go out and list options and bring it back to the Board, or what?
I can answer that one.
Okay.
The selection for who ultimately does this is the responsibility of the Board. So when we did this 40 months ago, we did a request for proposals from multiple people that provide this service, and then we brought their fee structure and their presentation portfolio, et cetera, to the Board, and then the Board made a decision as to who we should go forward with. So that's the process. And in this case, I had multiple employees over the last while come to me and express their concerns, and said, you know, "We're working with Rick, we're going to bring this to the Boards, the Boards are aware." They wanted to know if we, Kevin and I, were going to start a request for proposal process. And I explained to them at that point, that needs to come from the employees. You guys need to support a change, because it's ultimately the Board's decision to make that change. And that's why they held their meetings, and you got the letter you got today.
So do the employees rely on you as... To coach them into how to invest their money so they get a good return?
I give them the opportunity to do that, some folks do, some folks don't. Like I said, I give them the opportunity to sit down and visit with me, some of them have taken me up on that, 82% of them, and some of them have not.
Of the 82 that have taken you up on that, how many of them have made money, and how many of them have lost money?
I'd have to look at that, to see exactly what it is, but...
Idea?
I... You know, over 85%, I'm sure have made money, if not more. I'd have to give you the exact numbers.
I don't remember how this initially started, probably 46 months ago or so. We were probably six months into this when we started, before we made a decision. But there were some concerns from our fiduciary responsibilities, that ICMA, is that who it was? ICMA was not performing, maybe to the best interests of the employees. It's been expressed to me that maybe ICMA was just fine, and they're not as happy with what we've got going for them right now. Is ICMA a choice in... Will that be one of the choices in going back?
I'm going to give a little bit of background, because I think we do have some new Board members here, too, when we went out for RFP. So when I got here, we had our CMA for a long time. They are not based in either Paradise Irrigation... They are not based in, uh, either Paradise or Chico, I believe, that their local, their local office is Sacramento. Um, and I personally didn't feel like they were giving us the service that they should be doing, meaning what Rick is doing is the quarterly, uh, education. Um, that was basic, that was the biggest one, was the education, you know, just the coming up, meeting with individuals and stuff like that. Um, so that's when I presented to the board to go out for an RFP. ICMA was part of that RFP. So they were one of the choices even in that RFP. Um, the big thing that I was looking at was fees. It was services, but also fees. Um, when I did do a comparison between the fees that ICMA was charging versus the fees that FTJ was going, was proposing to charge, the fees were substantially lower with FTJ than it was with ICMA. So I felt it was in the best interest of the district employees at that time to actually go with somebody who's charging less fees, giving more services, and having a, a full blanket of portfolio options. But it was the board's decision at that time. ICMA was part of that decision. There was three that came to the board, ICMA, FTJ, and Nationwide Insurance, who also offers retirement plan. If we were to go back out for an RFP, I would definitely give that option to ICMA to have an opportunity to bid the job. I don't think that there's any, uh, restriction that should be given to, to a, to a company to, to be able to, to bid for, for a job. So I, I'll answer the question that you have, is yes, they would be part of the options, but there would be multiple, there would be many, many, many options out there that we would go forward with.
What I would recommend, if you want to proceed, is that, that Kevin and I put these RFPs out, I mean, we're at conferences, we've got multiple vendors that can provide this service. And then I would get a couple employees from the, uh, IBW group and a couple from management, and the six of us would go through the proposals, do an initial evaluation, narrow it down to a few that ultimately the board would choose from. So that, that's my recommendation going forward.
Were there, were there any employees included in when we, I thought that there were some employees included in when we narrowed it down, 'cause we had more than the three that came into their presentations?
Of six.
And then that was done with some employee input?
Yeah, they presented, each, each company presented to, to the employees.
I think we should have.
They presented out like at the.
Okay, guys, we're gonna do something now. This, it's called Robert's Rules of Order. Before we go any further, we're gonna have a motion for action, 'cause this is an action item. And when we have a second, we will debate the motion, whether we wanna pass it or not. So do any of you?
I'll make a motion that, um, staff go out for RFP for a new investment retirement program, um, for the employees.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a question. Uh, is there a disadvantage to changing from FTJ? Is there a penalty or something like that? No, okay. I just wanna make sure that there wasn't something there that we, we had a contract.
Nothing says they can't stay with that once they make that decision.
Exactly, right.
Yeah, and I'll give, I'll give the, the, obviously, the pros are that you get a brand-new provider. There is a lot of administrative work that goes along with changing a retirement plan provider, not only from the district standpoint, but from the employee's standpoint. Obviously, if the employees are, that's what their desire is, they understand that that's something that they're gonna have to do, is the movement of funds from one provider to the next, um, is not always the easiest thing, but it's part of business, it happens every single day. So, but there is a lot of administrative work.
The reason I ask, 'cause I remember when we went from ICMA, they, they held the funds for a certain length of time.
Right, yeah, they had a fund, they had a fund that you had to give twelve months notice.
Twelve months' notice.
That was their basic fund, wasn't that their basic?
It was called the plus one.
Eighty, the seventy percent of the money or eighty percent of the money.
There was a lot of money in there.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, guys, let's, let's, you know, Kevin, if you'll hold your comments and maybe ask me if you wanna comment. Sorry. I wanna make this meeting run smooth and I don't wanna be here at ten o'clock tonight. I want us to go home earlier, okay? So, we've got a motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded. Does any other directors have any questions about the motion? Just directors.
I would, I think it's been answered, but I would assume that the funds would stay as they are until the change is made, yes.
Okay, I'll explain a little bit. The board has the final say on whatever fund it wants to go. Um, so this will have to come back to the board.
Subsequent date, yeah.
For, and I'm gonna ask about a couple other things that the employees have asked for here. So, does anybody else have any more questions about going out with an FTD? If that's, get the initials right, I don't know.
RFP, RFP, Request for Proposal.
Okay. If not, uh, does anybody wanna call for the question?
Public.
Not yet.
No, you have to have public input before you vote on it.
Before you vote on it.
Before you vote on the motion.
Yeah.
Yes.
Why?
Why? 'Cause it's our rule.
Yeah, so.
We said that we, they could talk about anything before it was on the agenda.
It's part of the public participation.
Right.
Clause at the beginning.
Yeah, I know. Technically, he opened it to the public already. So, does somebody call for the question?
I thought he opened it to the employees.
We did, and the employees did speak, and I think that they've addressed it, especially with their letter, so yes, I would call a question.
There's two more items that they've asked about.
I would call, I would call a question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the other two questions that they asked.
You have to give the, what action took, five oh?
Okay, well, I assume that.
No, you have to do that for the minutes, right? It's part of the rules, isn't it?
Well, she counts, she knows it was everybody.
I mean, I'll put it in a minute, try to help people to the public.
Right.
Or anybody listening.
Or anybody listening, right.
Okay, the other thing they asked about, secure a third-party financial auditor, go over the results of FTJ's finding and verify that each person has been made whole. Would the board wanna take action on it? Is there a motion?
I have a question about it first.
No, motion first. If the motion fails, it won't make any difference.
I don't think that's on the agenda, is it?
It says action may be taken on the agenda.
You're still under number five.
Yeah, we're still, yeah. I was gonna say, it's still part of that because.
Okay, I didn't know.
Update from sort of planner.
So we're taking this in three pieces then, so.
Yes, we're gonna take it in three pieces like they presented.
Well, part, part two is actually.
We already did two.
Part, part two is actually what we just voted on.
Yes, part one is a third-party financial auditor they'd like to see, and is, we have a motion from the board for that, and if we get a second, then we can debate.
I'll make a motion to secure a third-party financial auditor to go over the results of FTJ's findings and verify that each person has been made whole.
Second.
Okay, where you go, guys?
Question, who's gonna pay for it?
This is, well, that's one of the questions, since we're gonna have to do a motion first. It is our fiduciary responsibility and was back at the time when we made this decision to make sure that the employees are taking care of the best and have the best retirement plan they possibly can, investments they possibly can. Um, so what is an anticipated, I'd like Kevin to, if he knows the answer, to give an idea of what he thinks this might cost.
I, I have no idea, honestly. I, I don't know the time and effort that it would take, and it's a special, it would be a special project that you would have to go out to multiple, I would believe CPA firms that would be willing to take on the project and bid it out based on whatever they're gonna have to do to, to do the calculations.
Is that somebody like, uh, Tittle and Company?
Tittle and Co. could be one.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not sure.
They do that kind of?
Can I ask a question?
I know they are auditors.
So, if you were to end up retaining the business, uh, would your firm or your associate there be willing to pay the fees of the third-party auditor to ensure the employees that they got their fair compensation?
I'm not sure I'm prepared to answer that question for, for them. I guess I would say this, that there wasn't an error in the calculation, it's a wrong application. And I can certainly understand every concern, which is very valid, but what was on the application in charge, exactly what was on the application, so.
I think what they're concerned about is the error was made, but they're concerned that the calculation will be fair and correct for the investments that they individually made. And I think if I were one of the ones that picked wisely, I wouldn't want my return average by somebody who didn't, simply because you guys made an error.
I would certainly consider it.
Okay. Any more comments by the board?
Repeat the motion.
Thinking right now.
You just read it.
I'll second it.
Was it exactly like this?
He just read it.
A motion to secure a third-party financial auditor.
Okay, wasn't it, send out RFP?
No, we did that on the first one.
No, no, an RFP for the.
You may have to do an RFP on this, too.
You had, we had to make a motion, they wanted us to make a motion first before we could ask that question.
Regardless of what the cost may be, I think we owe it to the employees. I second that.
If it's, if it's over five thousand, it'll come back to you guys.
George has up to five thousand he can spend. So, I will open it to the employees and the public for questions and comments. Yes, go ahead. You're slow tonight, you normally are up here at least twice by now.
Thank you, board, Lauren Harvey. Um, this brings up a point that I'd like to illustrate at this time. Uh, in the past, I have, I have said that your treasurer is basically a private contractor, and, um, I'm just wondering if he shouldn't have been overlooking this the last thirty-nine months? And if so, why did it go on? And if not, why isn't he paying for the audit out of his own pocket? Because obviously, he's our treasurer, he's supposed to be keeping track of the money, and he should have caught this. And if he had a bond, we could have pulled his bond and had this audited. So that makes another reason why I think the treasurer should have a bond, because he's a private, he's basically a private contractor. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren, interesting ideas. Anybody else? You need to break the ice again, folks, if you're gonna say something, please come up and say it.
I think Kevin could re, re.
Would you like me to respond to that?
Please.
No.
I do.
No.
He doesn't even see the other employee's stuff.
I'm sorry, but that's not the way we're doing it.
Um, just one thing, so you all have the letter that we drafted and the employees signed, and it's not just one mistake that's happened. There's been several, so the faith is not there, I'm sorry, but.
Could you elaborate on?
Is there, is there more items?
I would, but not.
That we should be looking at here during the audit?
If Rick wants to elaborate a little bit, he can. Um, he's aware of it, so is George and Kevin, so.
Apparently, us board members aren't aware of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say that.
How long has this been a problem? Has it been ongoing for six months, two, two months, two years, what?
Well, this has been the entire period on that one issue, but.
Yeah, but I think he's asking what Laura is referring to.
I'd like to know what the other issues are, because.
It can't be ongoing, it couldn't.
As far as I know, there's been two issues.
Okay.
Two issues that mistakes have been made. Um, Rick definitely rectified the first one, but now the second one is a doozy, and it's like, okay, we're being overcharged, not everybody, some people are being undercharged fees on this part of it, where the other part, like I said, Rick, what can explain a little bit more in detail what happened on that and why it happened, or maybe FTJ? But like I said, Rick has rectified the situation in both times, so I, I'm giving Rick a lot of credit on this, but the employees are, are just done. It's, it's this is our money. We don't want it messed around with.
The issue she referred to is, is, I apologize, I don't exactly know if it was, uh, Laura or another employee, but they were asking about the length of their loan they had on their, um, account. In this particular plan, you borrow money from your account, you pay it back in interest and so on and so forth. Um, and I, I guess I'll have to let Dean explain exactly how, but basically, people had paid off their loan and they were continuously paying into their accounts after the loan had already been paid off. So that money went back. As soon as I knew about it, we contacted FTJ and figured out who the preparticipants were and returned that money to those folks immediately. So, the, uh, they were giving their dollars back, if there was any gain in the account, the gain stayed, if there was any losses, they got their, whatever overpayment they made. So that was, I believe it was in March, yeah, it was March of this year that that was fixed.
How long did that go on for?
Can I make a comment?
We're doing, it's through and then you can.
Twenty-three months it overpaid.
Twenty-three months, wow.
So, we inherited the plan back in August of two thousand thirteen. So, when the plan moved over, there were a number of loans already existing, okay? So, loans came over, we accepted loan balances at that time, we explained that, you know, we don't control the amortization schedule on these loans, every loan, side up the loans and the amortization schedule, that goes with us. You have to notify us when the loan is closed out, we did not initiate the loan. So, in this case, that's exa, so what happened was, we continued to get loan payments, you know, through, through the payroll processing system, we continued to credit those as loan payments, they went into the client's account, and then, you know, basically, we were instructed that the loan, you know, was, you know, this one ended, you know, eighteen months ago. So we went back in, credited the clients, wrote the client's check, debit the account, put them out, wrote the client's check. Code it approximately, so there's no tax ramifications, uh, for the client. And like we said, anyone who had gains in the account, they, they were able to keep those, so there was a, there were three, there were three individuals that this happened to. Uh, and so, if there was twenty-four hundred dollars in loan repayments, you know, the, they were invested, you know, they got the gains on that twenty-four hundred dollars left in the account and just refunded the principal's payment back to them. So I can tell you that we went through all, all loans, and now we have indicated when the loan stopped dating, so.
So that was the error of the previous investment firm?
Well, no, it's when the, it's when the loans transferred from ICMA to FTJ, then.
Rolled over.
They inherited loans without dates.
Correct.
That were attached to them. But now you've rectified that problem on all existing loans, even ones you've inherited, ones that you've created since the forty months?
That's right. At the time that we inherited the loans, we didn't have a mechanism in place to modify the amortization schedule and put a loan stop date in. So in the past thirty-nine months, roughly, twenty-four months ago, we do have now, we have, we put that in there, we pulled the old paperwork with all the loan downs and identified when the payoff date was for the loan, that's out there.
So you did have that information, the payoff dates?
We did have the information, you know, we told, we told the plan, when we got the assets, that we didn't have a mechanism in which to record that particular date, that they created the amortization schedules for the loans. So it was going to be their responsibility on when to stop handling it, stop providing us loan repayment.
If they knew their loan would expire in May of two thousand sixteen, they needed to stop paying on that loan and make some kind of contact with Rick or, or FTJ correctly.
They being the employees?
Yes, because they didn't have, they didn't have any type of mechanism slot in the program to track it.
Yeah, well, notes get sold all the time, but, you know, I wouldn't wanna keep paying on something that was already paid off either. I would expect the person who was receiving my monies would tell me when it was paid.
Correct, I mean, it was, I mean, it was being deducted from the employee's paycheck, you know, month after month, sent through the payroll system to us, and coded the loan.
I think Kevin would like to speak now.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, that the loan money was just going into their retirement account. So it wasn't like it was going to a creditor of some sort, it was going directly into their retirement account. So it was just, it was just money into their retirement account and money out.
Yeah, I understand that.
I just wanted to.
It was earmarked as loan payment rather than as investment.
One at a time.
Dollars.
I just, I, I just wanted to clarify that, so.
Yeah. Okay, Seth, do you want to say something?
I, nah, he answered the question, thank you.
Yeah, it might have been four savings that they weren't expecting to have to expend, but they thought they did because it was due and they had to pay it. Uh, that would be my position on it. Yeah, it might have been four savings that they weren't expecting to have to expend, but they thought they did because it was due and they had to pay it. That would be my position on it. Not everybody has extra money to chuck away.
Does anybody else from the audience have anything to say or add to this thing? Did I have a question for the thing, or did the board want to say something more?
I can understand the employees' lack of faith. Their clerical errors, they're not, I don't think intentional errors, especially on the loan end of it. And the initial interest, wrong application is just the way that it, it's just a lot of money traveling and not a lot of hands-on. So I think they're honest mistakes. I do understand the employees' position, though, at this point in time. And hopefully, I don't know if FTJ is gonna be willing to come back in and bid for the, if we go to RFP, then be willing to bid for it, but...
Cliff has something more to say?
We'll see what we do.
I think that, I hear what the employees are saying, are saying there were more than one issue, there was more than one error made. And I guess my question would be, are there other errors that were made with my money that I don't know about yet? So I can understand their desire to have an independent person look and verify that there are no other mistakes and that their money is secure where it's supposed to be. So I understand that completely.
I will, I will say, if I can, as President, that I think of the people that did come and present to us. ICMA's presentation was less than adequate that evening. And it was good. I think the nearest, the other people that presented, their nearest representative was either the Bay Area or Sacramento. Was there one in Chico? That was the...
Nationwide.
Nationwide, thank you, yeah, yeah. It was nice for people to be able to have somebody up here to go directly to, in town. I think that was one of the best thoughts about that, was it was easy for them to make contact with the financial planner and...
Okay, Seth, we're trying to keep the comments to, do we need this, someone to verify it, financial auditor? And not to go too far, field comments about old business.
I call a question on the motion.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. I think that's the end of that thing, and we'll take a break now. You can time it for about five minutes. I think, I don't know about anybody else, but I need to get up every once in a while.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Dean, for coming tonight. Thank you for the long flight to come out. Appreciate it.
About checks. And, let's see, Dan's first meeting, so we'll start with Cliff. I'll be the last one. And we'll go right across on the check journal.
Well, I do have a question, and I am not sure where it's at on your pages there, Georgiana, but it has to do with the catonic polymer purchase...
Polymer.
Of thirty-some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Caris. It's NTU technology.
NTU.
Yes.
Got it?
And...
There's enough for a caris to...
And don't get too excited, George. I'm not suggesting that we get rid of the catonic flock. But here's my position, okay? Zeta Flock twenty is a catonic polymer. Catonic polymers have a specific weight. And you, of course, there are fine differences in some of them, but as long as you select the appropriate product and you do the appropriate jar test, you're gonna come up with satisfactory results. From there, it's finessing it to which one gives you the best bang for your buck. So I'm not suggesting that what we're purchasing is wrong. What I am suggesting is that we're not going out for bid on it, and because of that, we're getting hosed. And if I go back to your August seventeenth, 2011, just at random, going back to 2011, you paid twenty thousand, six forty for a load of the same product that you just paid thirty thousand dollars for. So a ten thousand dollar increase in that frame of time...
Well, this is broken into two parts. Sorry to interrupt, but...
Yeah. Seth, that's one thing I want to kill. You just let, hold your comments till he's done.
Okay. So I'm just looking at this cost here. And the reason I looked this up was because the thirty thousand seemed a little high. And so I tried to go back and find out what we paid for it prior. And so there's a big discrepancy there. Maybe it's warranted, maybe it's not. But it brings up the question again. I don't say that we switch from these guys, but I say that we make them compete and allow other people to come up and do jar tests as well. And may the best one win, and if it's still these guys, great. But the very least it would happen is, is it would make them sharpen their pencil and be more competitive. Because every time, we just buy it because, yeah, it works and we don't want to rock the boat. That's just incentive for them to say, hey, we're gonna make a few more bucks this time.
I understand. We'll get you a history on it. We'll look into it and we'll consider that.
I mean, all of the other municipalities, if you go down to POTW in Chico, and every year, they go out for bid. All the bigger organizations go out for bid, and they make the competing companies come into their lab and do the same tests. Everybody's on an even playing field, and they look at it and they say, great, yours works, yours works, yours works. We'd accept any one of these three. They're pretty comparable. What's your price? And that way, if somebody loses it next time, they're gonna sharpen their pencil. It's gonna make them make less money, and it's gonna help us save money. And it's just the smart thing to do, I think. Doesn't cost us anything for that to happen. Okay.
Thank you. Seth?
Well, I didn't actually have any questions on checks this month. But so, in looking at the catatonic polymer, that portion of this bill looks like twenty thousand, five sixty-two. So when you look back at twenty, what's the ProPAC ninety-six hundred? What is...
What is that?
Because that makes up the balance of the thirty thousand.
Yeah, that's a different chemical.
Oh.
So the...
Yeah, my bad.
The catatonic polymer, it still looks like twenty thousand, and from the number you gave us, that sounds like about a hundred and forty dollars less or a hundred and twenty dollars less.
You're right. I'm glad you caught that. I was looking at the bottom-line item where it was highlighted, it said NTU. And they did purchase aluminum chlorhydrate and the Zeta Flock twenty. Okay, so...
So I think it's still good to go out.
Not a big difference, but I still think...
But I agree in that.
You need to do the jar testing and you need to do the bidding, because it's, as you found out on the Caris, I mean, on the NTU versus the Caris, on the zinc orthophosphate, we saved a considerable amount of money simply by asking the question and getting the bids.
I totally understand that, and we will certainly look into it. I will express my concerns like I have to you before. At the end of the day, it could look like it works in a jar test, and then we make it work. But if it fails, it's ultimately our responsibility, and it could be more costly than the few thousand dollars. So that's what we're always concerned about.
Don't misunderstand me. I'm not saying we jump ship just because it's a few bucks cheaper. What I'm saying is, is that you put the hammer to them and say, you know, you've had this business a long time. You need to be competitive. We're getting other bids. If you're out of line, you need to sharpen your pencil if you want us to keep buying this product from you.
Understood.
And in the process, we may very well find that there's polymer out there that's cheaper, that does a better job, or is more economical. You never know. But unless we look, we're not gonna find out.
Understood.
Seth, do you still want to have more comments?
Same by initial look, it looks like we're paying less than we were back in 2011. But always good to go out and have people sharpen their pencils, because that's definitely something good. So that's the end of my questions for checks.
Larry?
Okay, page twenty-one. The only question I have is, we cut down Sierra Trees. We cut down three trees. It says, "At Paradise." And where was it, the lake or...
No, just kidding. No, they were at the lake. So we got a call from a lady who borders our property, who are concerned about trees on our property that were in danger of falling on her house. So we had a, our bris go out there immediately to see if it was an emergency. He said that they definitely were dead. There was definitely a risk, but the risk was an immediate risk. So then we then went out for a bid and bid out the project, and then had Sierra Tree, who won the bid, go out and remove the trees.
Very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's one of the ones I highlighted, too. I actually have many questions. In fact, I've got so many, and so that we don't choose to be here until ten o'clock tonight, I'm gonna...
You asked your questions.
I'm just gonna go in.
There may be some...
I'm gonna pick a rainy day, because I just need to find out how these all fit. However, I did have a couple of brief comments. In talking to a friend, Megalia, on page twenty, towards the bottom, "Megalia Reservoir Filtration Plant for PG&E is twelve thousand. With the popularity of solar, have we looked into any kind of solar anything?"
Yes, we've evaluated.
And determined that didn't pay, or just...
Just not feasible, didn't pay. There's, the location is not good. And the, so to get an adequate location, you're talking about tree removal, sequa, et cetera. We have been working with a company, because there's a program that you can build solar off-site. You don't get quite the bang for the buck as onsite. The government agencies are able to do that. We've been working with them to find, we need to find five acres that makes sense. And we found one, and then sold out from under us, so we're still working on that.
And then just one other brief one also is on page seventeen. Frank's Refrigeration Buildings and Grounds, obviously, that's not grounds. It's heating, air conditioning unit, heater unit, whatever, one of the buildings or something, yeah, or in here.
We had a very expensive controller, computer controller, for all the heating and air, parking light lock, light... Parking lot lights, easy for you to say. It went bad. It's like six thousand dollars. So we bailed on that. We put timed thermostats all throughout the office and just dumped that very expensive system.
I remember you referencing that a few months ago, I think, yeah. That's all I've got. Like I said, I probably would, I'll pick a rainy day and call you and... Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much, Dan. I was on page eighteen, Hunt and Sons. It has down how many gallons of gas and diesel and everything, but it doesn't say the cost per gallon. And I was wondering if you could add that to the cost per gallon? Most of us as consumers are aware of what gasoline prices are, diesel, and see what kind of deals we're getting.
I'll try to see if it fits in there. We are limited on space on when you can put in there, but I'll see what we can do in there.
Sure, they must charge you by the gallon. I can't imagine any other basis.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I mean, seventy-seven hundred and seventy-one thirty divided by three hundred.
But that's gonna fluctuate from month to month and...
Yeah. On page twenty-one, it has Stillar Consulting Grant writing. Have we, has she come in with any kind of a grant so far? We're paying out money. Has anything developed?
No, nothing's developed. That payment was, I think I reported it at my last report. That work was done for the Office of Emergency Services Hazard Mitigation Grant. So we haven't got any money. It was positively accepted, and we're on a list with the federal OES. So we're waiting to see when money comes available and where we rank. So that's where that stands.
And that's all of my questions. Thank you very much, Dan. Then we have a motion to approve the check register.
So moved. I'll make a motion to approve...
You have to do the one that's in the book, Dan.
They want to learn.
You have to read it.
Yeah.
Excuse me. I'll make a motion to approve general check fund numbers five zero zero one three through five zero one one five for the month of November twenty sixteen totaling three hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. Exclusive avoided check number five zero zero one five. An authorization of a similar amount allowing or adjusting for extraordinary budget or board-approved items during the month of December two thousand and sixteen.
Second? Second, Larry seconded? Question, anybody? Question? Or do you want to, anything else you want to say about this?
You want the public?
Okay, Larry. Anybody else that want to talk about our check register? The exciting check register?
They usually don't, but give them a chance.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Okay. We had a, in our closed session, we talked about the SOMTAG Enaction Agreement with the ID. I think we'll skip over it in the open section. And we'll go to Automated Meter Battery Update, Continued Findings, Manager Barber, Review and Provide Direction to Staff Relating to the Automated Meter Reading System. Action may be taken. For us to George.
Real quick, you had a very detailed technical report that Jim Adreeni put together. He's put a lot of effort into this evaluation. Some of the things we found, he highlighted in there. But to summarize, for those that didn't read it all, it's not necessarily as simple as battery replacement. Other agencies have found that it's the circuitry that's actually driving the batteries down. So you have our proposal at the end. Like I said, Jim put a lot of effort, and I really appreciate the outreach he made to all these other agencies dealing with the same issues, so that we kind of have their history and experience of how they've dealt with it. And what I do want to report, make sure everyone knows, is the system still works really good. We're getting ninety-nine percent reads in a twenty-four hour period. That's a very high level. So that's the good news. We've been putting a lot of effort in the rainy days and in the winter to doing replacements and battery replacements and trying to tackle these when it's most opportune time to deal with it. They've gotten pretty far ahead of the curve, and things are going well. So like I reported in here, that was my addition to Jim's report. We're gonna, we've got ninety-six batteries that we've brought in. We're replacing those. We're gonna kind of track and see how they respond. And then we're also replacing failed ones with the new Xener units. The thought being, if we don't get to the battery replaced very quickly, as soon as we get the code, it really seems like a wasted effort to try and change out batteries, because it's gonna come back to haunt you, and you're in and about doing it twice. So that's why we're trying to do a two-pronged approach, so we'll still attack some with batteries when we get, as soon as we get the code. But the ones that have kind of been coding for a while, that we're catching up on, those will be replaced with Xener units. So open to questions.
How many of better, how many of these have we replaced this last month? The bar chart indicated quite a few. How many have we replaced?
It's skyrocketing.
Yeah, whatever, whatever, you know, the chart skyrocketed, yes, because of the extra effort we put in getting ahead of the curve versus not just because that many's failing. So we're putting in extra effort, trying to catch these ones with the code before they stop reporting. We're trying to hit those. So that's, there's two reasons, that's not the only reason failure isn't why you're seeing a big spike.
So in other agencies that are out there that I assume we contacted, or it sounds like we contacted, have they been experiencing that it's circuitry, poor workmanship in the other units that is causing the problem that we're out of the datamatic units in there?
Yes, they're finding in many cases, especially the Malaysian ones, the circuitry construction is very poor, and that's likely what's driving the battery failures.
I thought when we talked about this last month, we were gonna have the people that did this report, the people that were involved in doing the report, we were gonna have them here. I don't know why we're not, why they were not here tonight. I thought we were gonna have the...
It's a pretty complete report, though.
Yeah, I was just gonna handle it. You know, keep in mind, whenever we ask staff...
Sure.
All the way into management to come here at night, it's, it's time and a half. And so-
I, I can-
Ben's how I'm the one that brought this issue up to begin with, let me have a comment on it. I, I read, I did read this in detail a couple times.
Takes a couple times.
It does. And, and my first, at first blush, I thought, okay, maybe just trying to take the easy way out here and just replace the damn things. But, it does make sense, um, if they found a trend that ones that were made in a particular country had a higher failure rate, and if they're failing because the batteries are dying, I can see that a sloppily built circuit board will pull more power and will shorten the life of the battery. That all makes sense. That's what they found and that's what their other partners out in other water locations, other districts have found to be true also. So I think going forward, it's just another tool in our toolbox and here's what we need to do. We need to recognize that if the unit needs to be replaced, we replace it with a Zenner. If the unit can be saved by a battery replacement, then we save it. If it's marginal, probably gonna be less energy to replace it, but if you know, if the codes tell you that it's probably just a battery and if you feel that it's not one of these units that's drawing excessive power, then change the battery and save the bucks. Ultimately, it sounds like they're all gonna die and we're gonna end up having to replace them with Zenners. I just hope that the company that we're going with now, A, doesn't go out of business or file bankruptcy and B, is building a quality product that they're gonna stand behind. It sounds like they are from what I read. So, if we can stave off having to replace them all as long as we can by making battery changeouts and it's more economical, great, that's the plan we should follow. But if it doesn't make sense, then lick our wounds and accept the fact that we made a poor choice and that hopefully we're making a good one now and just know the difference between the two.
Um, I, I've, I've been involved with this just a, a smidge with Jim and talking this through. And to me, it, it's more like medical research. There's a lot of testing, getting data back, taking that data, seeing what that data's telling us and going back out and trying to do something different. So we're still trying to figure out, is there a solution to this problem? The one thing, though, to remember is, um, the Zenner models are, it's like, uh, replacing a Commodore 64 with a Dell Intel processor. You know, you're, you're replacing a old computer with a new computer. So there is a benefit there, you're actually getting double the strength of the product when you're replacing it with, from the old to the new. So there, you're getting a higher quality product in the ground, so there is some value to that.
Is it counting more accurately or sending a signal further, or is it-
It has, it has, uh, twice-
Sending a signal further?
Yeah, it's twice the strength of the other one. The other thing, too, is that all the people that we've talked to that have put Zenners in and replaced them with datamatics, their failure rate is .5%.
Right, I read that.
So it's a very, very small failure rate on that. Um, it appears that the company is, is very strong, I mean, datamatic looks strong too, so I, I'm not gonna say that that's anything different. But they are making their product, I believe it's a USA-made product, so there is some strength in that. And what, what, through this process is what we're trying to find out, is it, and that's what we're trying to find out, is it a battery issue? You know, are you replacing, was the battery okay in the original product? Was it an actual-
Circuitry.
Circuitry product, right? And so we're trying to figure that out, is it a data product? Is it a data problem where we're just inundating these products with, with too much data coming through? So is that, so it's an ongoing research that we as staff are taking on and going forward with. So I just wanted to kind of readif- reiterate that.
I'm glad you've complicated your life.
I think Jim has.
Initially, we were paying about a hundred dollars for the Zenners and then you went back and renegotiated with them-
Yeah, so-
For the $65 price.
So the $65 price, so there's, there's-
Clarify that.
Yeah, so there's, there's two, two prices. There's a, I believe it's a 75 or an 85 dollar-
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five dollar price, that comes with a 20-year warranty, 10 full, 10 limited. So, meaning you have a 10-year warranty on it and then, or warranty, yeah, and then, and then it- ratchets down through the last 10 years. The $65, you get the datamatic warranty, which I believe we have four years left on it. But, what we're trying to, to re- really look at is, what's the failure rate of these products? And how much are we paying for a warranty on a product that doesn't have a high failure rate? So, is it worth paying an extra $20 on a product to, to have a .5% failure rate that we're seeing for that product? Or do we just take the $65 product that is only offered to datamatic customers that are offering that thing?
Let me ask you a question, on the Zenners, how long have they been out in the field?
Some of them have been out, I believe, over 10 years. Because there's people out there that started changing them out to Zenners.
What are the failure rates of the units exclusively that are over 10 years of the-
I, I don't know that exact answer.
Before we can decide whether we need to pay the extra for the insurance, we need to know-
And we are, that's what, I'm not saying that we're doing this and this is how we, we're-
Cause I mean, we thought-
Like I said, this is, this is research.
Fireflies are great for the first couple of years.
Right, this is research, this is what we're looking at. So that's what we're kind of weighing out at this point. Right now, we have a credit with them that offers us a, to use that credit to buy fireflies. That credit has stipulations that says you will buy fireflies at, they give it to $75, Zenners, $75 with the full warranty. So that's what we're buying right now until our credit runs out and then we'll make the decision based on the, the warranty issues.
How many do we have in stock now, on standby, ready to put in Zenners?
I forget what our last order was. We're, we're buying, I believe, in a hundred, hundred chunks.
Say, we had a hundred, I think, on the last check register.
But, but as we're, again, this is another thing that we're looking at is, if we're going to go full Zenner replacement, then we're gonna look at, if we buy bigger lots, can we get our better price? You know, if we buy a bigger lot that we know we're gonna need 1,000 Zenners, well, maybe they'll give us a price break if we're buying 1,000, we'll storm on the shelves and we'll get a de- decrease in the price.
What's the, what's the downside? Our warranty starts when we purchase them, not when we install them. So if we have a large supply of them and-
How do you track it?
We have, well, just, if we have-
Make a decision.
Let, let's see, obviously, we're probably gonna use 1,000 of them at some point.
Probably within 12 months.
Within 12 months, exactly, so, um, we got a break on them, but yet we used up one year of warranty.
Again, that goes into the, so what, how big of a price break are we getting? But this, those are all, yeah.
But these that we're buying right now have the 20-year warranty anyway.
Correct. They have a 20-year warranty.
Yeah. So before we go to the cheaper model, I would like to be assured that we've checked, not with Zenner-
No, we-
But with other-
The other districts are using-
That are using Zenners. And what is the failure rate on the units that have been out there for 10 years? Not the ones that have been out there for two or three years?
Yeah, and we could probably, Jim, I'll put Jim on that one. He's got contacts with all these guys out there, he knows them, so I'll have him ask that question.
What, total number of meters in town, 12,000?
10,500.
500, yeah.
There, there's a little more of these units because we've got them on fire service connections. So I think the total was 11.7 or something like that that is, is out there total.
But we also have fire, our repeaters.
Repeaters that are the same units.
The repeaters, and now we're starting to see failure rates on those repeaters too, which kind of stress-
Those are the datamatic ones as well?
Those are datamatic, but we're also looking at is, if we're replacing with Zenners-
Yes.
Do we need all, to replace all the repeaters? Because now we have a stronger signal that might not need those repeaters.
My next question, yeah.
So we're looking at that too, that, that might be-
But then that means that all the ones that we're talking to, the one you're replacing, have to be Zeners or they might not reach if they're still fire-
We're looking at that, that might not be true. Because if you put a Zenner, data, data, Zenner, then that Zenner then is picking up that slack for those datamatics, so we're-
So they're relaying it from one to the other and then to the repeater?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, and keep in mind, when the system was built, the repeaters were built like a, like a freeway. So when they laid out the whole system and designed it, they knew all these were gonna talk and to get the data through quicker, they put a line of repeaters down a street. So it's not like they're just spread out all over the district. They have, they have a certain number that they're servicing. And so if we make the decision on that street, we'll figure out how to make the decision for the whole street, not just one of the time.
Brings up an interesting question, now, what if you have two or three in a row fail? Does that mean we lose the signal of all the ones behind it to the repeater?
Yeah, we, we, and we get, we get reports on that immediately, so we'll say, there's six out. Well, why are the six out? It's because there's, there's a block in the system.
Yeah.
And so we'll go fix that block and then, now we got it all kind of-
And the percentage of our-
But the data stays, the data stays in.
Yeah, the data's still all there, it's just, it's just got a, a block that's not letting it get through.
Okay.
Uh, technology changing all the time, uh, I suspect that we would be wise not to buy too many thousands because there might be another brand, somebody, some other competitive brand coming up that might even be new and prove that would still be able to be plugged into our units, uh-
There are other brands actually as well. In fact, there's three referenced in your report.
Correct, yep, uh-huh.
Well, those are different systems.
Oh, are they?
So-
So it has to be compatible with what we've lined out?
Right.
Datamatic system.
What we have is a mesh system, so they all talk to each other and that information gets collected and returned to the district. And you have ones with towers, the older school was towers, so all the meters talk to a tower and then that tower talks to the district. The newer ones from Badger is a cellphone, they have a cellphone contract with Verizon, so every single meter just reports to the cell tower. That's where everything's heading at this point as well.
Um, so before we keep talking, because we're talking at the death, can we have a motion now to what we want to instruct staff for next month? Obviously, this thing needs to come back on the agenda again.
Was this a motion item?
There's a motion in the thing, but it says we were paying $65 and it just-
You're not asking.
I'm not asking for a motion, you don't need to.
Only if you want to change it.
Only if we want to change it. Because we need a motion, we don't want to.
Because that's what we're doing now already, yeah.
Well, in that case, I'll say we move on to another item. Can I, can I ask one quick question? One quick question.
George, uh, Datamagic or Datamatic filed for bankruptcy, but I understand they're still around. Are they associated at all in?
Zenner?
Uh, Zenner or in-
That's a good question.
No, he, he can explain it, but they, they-
Well, I just want to know if we're still giving them money in a roundabout way or if they're out of the picture.
Well, supposedly the entity's gone, but I think it was you that told me there's some new datamatic name out there. And I'm always, you know, these types of entities that declare bankruptcy, dissolve the entity and then go right back into business, I'm always skeptical that they, they may do that. And maybe it's because they want to get out of their warranty or something.
Right.
But technically, at least on paper, datamatic no longer exists. It's now the separate entity Zenner that acquired some of their patented rights and-
All, all of their Malaysian parts, uh?
Probably, yeah.
I don't know if they bought those.
Uh, as far as this item, can we please have it back on the agenda again for next month? And then with it, we, I've asked for this before, but how much is it costing us? Do we have a line item, budget item for this? Because this is going to be into the millions of dollars, it looks like.
We, we budget for it every year for replacements, but we can get you now.
Can you have a nice colorful chart and tell us how long you think it's going to last, this replacement?
Sure.
And have that ready for next month so we can see the dollars and cents of this? Because we're really not talking about that right now, we're talking about the technical end of it. The next thing on the agenda is, George, again, is presentation and update of the proposed process water recycle project. Information item only, this, so there's no action to be taken. This is just for our information and the great payers who own the district.
Yeah, the, the board got, got a memo earlier after, uh, Director Jacobson and I and talked to the State Board, um, Quality Control Board staff in Reading. And so, uh, since you all saw that, I just wanted to do a quick overview for the public's benefit and, and be able to answer any questions that the board has. So, a, a couple of things that came out of the meeting that I think are, are very important for folks to hear is, the staff was not against issuing another five-year permit, although, uh, that decision's gonna have to be made pretty early in 2017 because it takes them a while to, um, process that application. The limitations, we have interim limits to the discharge amounts and we've got two years left on dichlorobromomethane and seven years left on aluminum. Dichlorobromomethane is the one that we've been experiencing exceedances and being, um, technically fined for, although we haven't had to transfer any money because the efforts that we've made to fix this problem have been credited towards any fees they administered. While, while we're on that subject, I, uh, and Director Jacobson, you can correct me or whatever your impressions were, feel free to share them. Um, I was a little disappointed when you have, we've had multiple engineers here, we've talked to state board staff, and then when we're up there discussing another permit, they explained that there's a potential that we could hire a consultant to evaluate the receiving waters and make a justification for why our limits should be different, so-
Why didn't you tell us all that a long time ago, huh?
Exactly, that was the first I heard, you know, you hire these experts, you think they would've thought that was an option. So that's something that, that Jim's working on doing research that'll ultimately come to the board for consideration as we decide how we're gonna proceed forward.
I think on that, just real quick.
Yeah.
Their position was, that question wasn't correctly asked and so they didn't answer it. But being tell, George and I brought that question up, they said, well, there are some alternative calculations that could be done based on the fact that you're not discharging the volume into the receiving water, i.e. the Megalia reservoir, and based on the background aluminum that's in the Megalia reservoir, we could do a different calculation to give you a higher permanent parts per billion than the current permit that you're eventually going to have to go to. So that gave us some latitude to say, wait a minute, maybe we can make the appropriate changes to the system without having to put in a full recycle system like we were talking about to achieve these more lenient levels, so.
Yep, very good.
May I ask a question on that, Mr. President? Is, are we talking about changing the standard for Megalia or, or is it changing the location of the test?
Well, the way they, they, they wouldn't get into details because they won't do that. The way they explained it was, City of Reading wastewater treatment plant was successful, it's doing an evaluation and proving that if they put a diffuser on their discharge that 50 feet out in the Sacramento River, the levels were not, not, they were same as the background levels. So that's how they characterized it as, as, um, getting an expert to help convince them on how they write the permit.
So put in, I mean, that to me is a change in location, so you go from north side of the dam to maybe the south side of the dam.
Well, yeah, we would love, we would love to be able to prove that we should be testing at the outlet works of Megalia Dam.
Yeah.
Whether that's justifiable or not, it's gonna take expert to explain that.
I want to make a comment in here, as we've gone through this process, we were told repeatedly, especially me, that we could not move the point for testing water.
Exactly.
It had to be absolutely at that one point. We did do it at my suggestion, we did test one time at the end of the pipe dropped into Megalia reservoir. Instead of where the present testing is taking place is at the overflow pipe in the ponds. And directly next to that pipe is what they told me. So one of the chemicals, the chlorine byproduct, if you run it down over any kind of reel after that pond, it's pretty much gone. And so if we could even, you know, just move the permit down to the end of the pipe on the chlorine, the readings would be much lower, and they were at the time we did. But unfortunately, because we ran it in an open ditch down there, a little wetlands, mind you, aluminum went up because our soils are high in aluminum. So the second question, which I think I have a solution to now, was- a solution to now, was the high aluminum, which can be handled. But I have a, the reason I think people have been not too excited about testing the lake, they wonder where all this aluminum has been going all these years. And is it in the wa, in the lake? I don't know. We don't know. We don't know what's in the soils there. We don't know what's in the water there. And I've asked repeatedly, have we ever made a water test in Megalia reservoir? And my answer was no. Now, maybe in some ways you have. I don't know. What I got up at the water treatment plant is no.
Well, Bill, what they said was, when we were at that meeting, that they had a lot more data on background of both aluminum, um, and iron than we had. They said they've got numerous tests on.
Well, and, and it's tests we did. So whatever answer you got from the treatment plant, whether they didn't understand your question, but my understanding is currently we discharge right here. So those folks, sorry, board, can't point at your screen. But since we've gotten our new permit, we also had to take tests, uh, I believe upstream in the ponds or on Megalia reservoir as well. Um, so what we're looking for, what would be best is if we could actually have our results at the discharge. It's a big stretch to be able to get that approval, but it's certainly worth asking.
But we're, 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 the concern is carcinogenic, right?
Aluminum is yes. Like in dichloro, I'm not sure on dichloro, yes. Yeah. And, and the drivers for these permits are the dichlorobromomethane comes from the drinking water standards, which has always been frustrating because there's not another drinking water source out of Butte Creek for a long ways. Um, anyhow, that's a side complaint.
So when they, when they were here in April and they could see the, uh, you know, seven hundred plus people or however many it was at the Paradise Performing Arts Center, these thoughts weren't even in their head that, you know, you know, maybe we're looking for an alternative, even though that was quite clearly said there.
Their position is if you don't ask the question, they're not going to give you the answer. They.
Oh, they work for the state.
That.
Yeah.
They're very matter of fact about it. If you say, can we do this? They'll give you an answer. But if you don't ask, they won't tell. And we asked enough questions, enough probing questions where one of them hinted at, well, and then we needled them a little bit and, well, there are some other calculations that we possibly could do, which would give you a higher amount that you could discharge on your final permit, which.
And, and they're not calculations they'll do. We have to hire a consultant to hand them a report to justify it. And then if they agree with it, they can use those findings when they write the new permit.
And if we ask them who to hire and we get the right people, they'll probably buy the results. They're also reluctant to put anything in writing, right?
Yeah, because it.
No, they'll.
So they're all, so when they were asked alternative, you know, is there any alternatives? I know that question was asked that night. This, yeah, wasn't even entered into or that just frustrates me to no end.
But, I mean, they were very adamant about the fact that basically we're in violation of our extension right now.
Absolutely.
And, and the whole thing could be pulled, but they do want to work with us. And we gave them a plan going forward that they felt they could live with. And they told us to go back and put it together and come back and present it to them so that they could present it to their people and see if it would fly.
And that's the alternative that I'm talk, gonna all explain to everybody here. And, um, I, I mentioned it last month. Uh, this is a little better picture and I'll explain it a little more. And ultimately, the board has to decide what direction we go. Um, so the alternative that, that I'm working on with Neil, and he's, he's trying to cost estimate. And keep in mind, these are going to be feasibility level estimates that us as staff are putting together. And we're going to try and compare them to a seventy percent design that it's got a lot more details worked out. This is a very simple approach. So right now, our wastewater, wastewater involves three things, mainly filter to waste. It, it means it's our back, um, backwash of our filter water. And then it's our upflow clarifiers when we clean those. That's, that, those three things are our waste stream that we now pump up to the ponds and release into Megalia. So this more simple approach would be to pump those, to rebuild these ponds. They are leaking, um, to satisfy any future permits. They need to be reconstructed so that they don't seep into the groundwater or into Megalia reservoir. They also should be reconfigured so they're more effective at sedimentation and set it settling out the aluminums as well as the dirt. So when we, um.
So rectangles, the rectangles don't necessarily represent the shape.
Not necessarily.
Location, yeah.
No.
Yeah, I, I grasp the.
Good question. So when we currently pull water out of the ponds all summer long, but the, the turbidity level's very low. Um, it could, a lot of that water, maybe all of it with a new pond could be recycled as is when we don't have a storm event or a rainfall event or things upsetting the process. So the idea is when we can do that, we are going to just recycle right off the pond into the headworks of the treatment plant. And we have our controls of Intu turbidity as well as ten percent guide as to how much you can actually blend. It's a good guide because you'll start losing your process in the treatment plant if you start mixing your source waters too much. Then we create this out of spec tank. And what that is, is when these aren't meeting the parameters we need them to meet to recycle, we divert that water into this tank. So it's a much smaller percent, percentage than what we're sending now. The reason we're building that tank is so that we can further treat that water. Um, Jim Passanese and Neil Essela have, um, done some investigations and research into a newer product that, that removes dichlorobromomethane very effectively. Um, and so that's one alternative. And with a smaller amount that you have to treat, it's, it's going to be much less expensive. Um.
This would be a tank that ultimately we'd have to be cleaned out every so often, the sediment that's settling in there.
Yes, yeah. You may need two tanks when we finally decide it. We'd, sizing it's going to be pretty picky, et cetera. But yes. Um, and so we would continue with the discharge permit. We'd be discharging much less water. And then we'd be more prepared to treat that water if we can't meet the limits of the permit so that we don't get fined in the future.
Can I inject one thing in here?
Yeah.
So the reason that they're looking at that as being favorable because instead of discharging all the time into Megalia reservoir like we are now, most of the time, we'll be taking the water from the settling ponds back into the receiving water. So the only time we're going to discharge into Megalia is during times of low usage and, and rain events where we can't meet that. So even if we, even if it was clear enough, we can't run more than ten percent back in. And if we've got that in the ponds, the ponds are filling with water, we got to do something with that water. So we got to put it into Megalia. But they recognize that. That's one of the reasons they can do these other calculations because when they look at what we're discharging total pounds of, of product back into Megalia and annually, for example, it's going to be far less, well, because it's only going to be a small portion of the year.
And so then a, a filter to waste tank, um, basically when you bring a filter back online while it's ripening, that water doesn't need to go to the customers. It shouldn't. But it is of quality that you can recycle it immediately. And, and so that's why it's helpful to create a, a different stream for that. And it doesn't count towards your ten percent. So, um, it, it's beneficial to create that situation. So this is the alternative we're continuing to pursue. We explained it to them. They, they seemed like they didn't have any huge issues with it. Um, that it could be acceptable. Their concern is timing. How soon are we going to apply for a new five-year permit? Whether we can get through that process? And that we're still continuing to solve the problem. Um, those are their big things. We did speak directly about switching to an iron-based coagulant with them. Uh, got a very, very strong answer. Um, there's an iron level that's allowed to be discharged into receiving waters, exact, just like there is aluminum. It's a different number, but it's the same premise. And since we have likely iron background amounts in that receiving water, then to reach the match ma, maximum limit they want in there, you're only allowed to discharge what's already there plus between that and the limit. So switching to an iron-based coagulant, we're in the same boat as we are with the aluminum. It's not.
We could be in trouble with discharge.
Well, it would be.
Quicker.
It's, there's way more latitude, but the problem is we got more background iron to start with.
Exactly.
And they don't care what we put in, care what the total is.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So.
May I ask another question?
Okay.
Um, so George, if I'm understanding correctly, we, you may be able to treat the DCBM problem in the tank that you're, that under your alternative you'd construct. And then you may, we may have this option to change the compliance point or test point. If that works, that solves a big problem. But if it doesn't work, then maybe we've got seven years to then deal with aluminum?
Mm-hmm.
I thought you mentioned something about there may be a treatment. Since you're dealing with less water, there may be another treatment option around the tank. How, how would that work?
For aluminum or?
For aluminum.
Uh, yes, there is likely. The other is it gives us time. So we get, definitely we'll get the interim limit on aluminum, which we haven't exceeded for that additional time.
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, we have more data. We're operating the system and we could likely make a much easier, less costly full recycle at that point also is an option.
The interim level of aluminum we're allowed to discharge now is far more lenient than the final. But the final is not the final they gave us before. That's the kicker. It's if we do the right calculations, they'll give us more lenience on.
Possible.
The final, not the interim permit that we currently have. That wouldn't change till it runs out.
Yeah.
Possibly, these are all possible things.
Yeah.
And on the, on the chlorine side, if we had to on the pre-chlorination, we could ozonate. And then on the final, just chlorinate.
Well, that's, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that out.
Are we capable?
Staff has a lot of concerns with ozonization and they've expressed them before, but it is something that I need to explain. Right now, to meet our distribution levels of chlorine, the way the treatment plant is built, the, they adjust the pre-chlorination where those DCBMs are created. We do not have a post-chlorination option. We can install that relatively easily. We need to do some CT calculations. So that's a drinking water side. They want to make sure that the water has enough time to interact with chlorine before it gets to the first customer. Well, we've got a big, long forty-two inch pipe before it reaches the customers. We have to figure out how to deal with Del Oro because they actually pump water relatively close to the treatment plant up to the pines. But by redoing that calculation, it's possible we can reduce the amount of chlorine of pre-chlorination and post-chlorinate. But it, it may take a pilot test to be able to figure out how to do that correctly without disrupting the process. So if you, if you chlorinate less when the dirt's in the water, you get, you create less dichlorobromomethane. So that's, that's, that may be a cheaper, easier alternative than switching to something else like ozone.
Anything that'll get us below the level.
Yep.
Do you want to go on with the process water alter, that's what you're talking about now?
Yep, mm-hmm.
And now we did have some engineering work several years ago about redoing the ponds and we went on from there. So we should have that engineering study still on hand.
Yep, we're using some of that information, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And with that, uh, I guess you're, the next thing is on the agenda is long-term conservation state proposed regulations.
Any public comment?
Public, I'd ask public.
Public input, yeah.
Want public input? Well, I'll pass.
You have to, have to ask.
Anyone from the public comments?
Yes, thank you. Uh, good evening, directors, and thank you, George, for that presentation. Previously, you had said one of the advantages for us with the process water recycling project was salvaging six hundred, eight hundred acre feet of water, which would have otherwise been lost. What does this do for saving water? Same thing, same numbers?
Same water.
Shouldn't change it.
Less, but some. All right, thank you.
Lauren Harvey. Uh, as a public member with no influence on this board whatsoever, um, I'm, I'm, I'm giddy over the whole thing. I, I can't believe what change in just a few board members has done to the outlook of this sixteen million dollar plant that we were opposed to. And I must, I'd be remitting in not saying that Mr. Kellogg, for, for a long time, has been saying, why don't we look at other stuff? And I've heard him talk about the ripples coming out of the, the holding ponds for getting rid of the gas, let it gas off and stuff. And I'm, I'm absolutely thrilled that we're finally talking some good common sense here. Thank you.
Anna, do you want to comment? I think, is Anna here that?
Ann Davis.
And Rice?
Rice, not Davis, yeah.
Oh, okay. Anybody else in audience want to comment about this? Okay. Is there any motion or any action that?
No action needed.
I would like to make one request per, that we need to funnel this into a plan of action and come up with what we're going to do and bring it to the board in a fairly timely manner so that we can get the ball rolling on not only how we're going to go forward, but how, who we're going to get and how we're going to get these calculations done to make the Regional Water Quality Control Board happy with what we're doing so that they give it their blessing so that we have the time to move forward. So I'm not sure where we start on that, but I think we need to.
Well, I'll, I'll remind you that, that we're doing our legwork. We expect to have the seventy percent plans and estimate mid-January from AECOM. We're going to use their, uh, per item quantity charges, uh, that, that they have the most up-to-date research on, apply them to this project so we can have a comparative cost analysis, keeping in mind one's seventy percent down the road and one's not, maybe not even thirty percent. Um, I'm, plan on reaching out to the candidates in the recall process to try and meet with them, get their input. Because I, as the general manager, have to recognize the fact that the public is going to decide who, who operates PID going forward. So while we're going to have a tight timeline, we, we, we don't want to just wait until that decision happens. So if, as long as I can work with everybody, uh, get their questions answered, um, get their input through the process, that'll help speed things up when that decision's finally made by the public.
I would like us to be able to get to a point where we can look at the prior plan of action that we had of going forward with the recycle system and amending that or dumping that and coming up with a new plan. But I think we do need a, a plan that we can all look at and agree on and approve going forward in a fairly timely manner.
Yep, that's, that's my goal.
Okay.
In addition to getting a rough cost estimate, you're going to use the, the seventy percent to get your unit cost and then do kind of a back of, okay.
Yeah.
Are you, are you going to reach out to the Redding, I think it was Redding, that whoever the consultant was that assisted them and explore whether that's?
Jim's re, doing those outreaches right now. Yeah.
And, and A, is AECOM, they don't have an in-house person that has the expertise to say whether that's feasible or not?
It's not in their scope of work with our current contract. So yes, they would love to, as Tom Bernard put it, we're mowing the front lawn. We can certainly mow the back lawn if that's what you guys choose. So the most quickest switching gears is just in, in, engaging them to run with the alternative if that's what the board wants. But ultimately, the board will have to make that decision whether we move forward with AECOM or we add some time and, and go out for other proposals.
And we need a landscaping plan before we can do that.
Yeah, yeah. You know how much lawn to mow.
The latest magazine has Redding in it and has an article on it, the one we were given tonight. So, is there any more questions for George?
None.
Thank you very much, George.
Thanks.
Now you're back on the thing with this long-term conservation state proposed regulations.
You're going to take a few minutes too. It's serious stuff. There's a PowerPoint.
Maybe, maybe we ought to take another break then.
PowerPoint.
Well, it's up to you.
Let's take a break for a few minutes. Let me give you a chance to catch your breath and.
Okay.
Figure out what you want to say.
All right.
The same thing we're running up here. The, but what is?
The same thing we're running up here, but what is ag districts in the valley doing? Dustin, you have several of them that you work for.
Well, the, that's part of the legislative strategy, I think. We, the, my read of the report is they stop short of adopting similar budgets for ag agencies. This is only budgets for urban agencies, treated water customers. But I think if you have treated water budgets, it's a very easy next step to ag budgets based on some kind of duty, crop duty, or something like that. So, they, and then there would be a war if that happened.
Well, we do have ag users within our district, and...
Right, but they receive treated water, so they count against this formula.
Well, no, how about just saying you need an exemption for ag water, even though it's treated? Other words, they're simple things. If you have an exemption for ag water, whether it's treated or untreated, because a customer doesn't have any choice, he's going to get treated water in this district.
Yeah, I think you're raising good points that we need to make at the appropriate time. You know, when, when the bill comes out trying to implement these things, and I'm, I'm getting to another recommendation, we've got to work on Aqua, and Aqua's lobbyists, they're good, they're powerful. But because they're a little shaky on this, I'm not fully convinced that they can carry our story. So, I'm not recommending this just yet, but something maybe for further consideration is do we, in coordination with others that are similar, such as Southfeather, Nevada Irrigation District, want to retain our own lobbyist, so that at a minimum, we can make sure that our unique story, you know, these are foothill districts, senior water rights, we've got facilities that have been constructed by, you know, our own wallets to, to match those senior water rights, all have significant fire risk. So, that's something that, you know, like I said, I'm not recommending that just yet. I think we need to wait and see what comes, but maybe in January or February, that could be something we discuss.
We have a very good public relations outfit. I'm surprised they're not here tonight.
Holiday plans.
Holiday, okay. Anyway, we could use that to influence and gain allies in the districts that are in Northern California, the same way, by creating a mailing list and maybe have some leadership in it, and say, these are the problems that's coming at us, we must talk about our ag use or other uses, because like Southfeather is a split mostly to ag use, if I understand them, right? And so, you have all these differences, and then if you go to the biggest district in the valley, they have, as far as I know, no urban water use, it's all ag.
Yeah, GCID.
It's not a water size. But we need to gather those guys as allies. I'm not so enthused about suing people and trying to get their attention with lawsuits and more attention.
Yeah, I didn't say that, by the way.
You have more work to do, that's...
No.
And I looked at your bill this month, and I thought, oh!
No, but the reason that bill's the way it is, is there's a large chunk of that for the state mandate matter. And that's pending litigation, different state mandate, but again, if we're successful, if, if the state wants to throw these new mandates at us, that becomes a powerful tool. You want to impose a mandate? Fine, but you fund it.
I, I noticed that they use these four items, using water more wisely, eliminating water waste, strengthening local drought resilience, and improving agricultural water use, efficiency and drought planning. Those are all lofty goals, and I'm sure we all would like to follow those.
Yeah.
It's how they sort of going to do it, and it's ridiculous.
Yeah, and that's maybe an unstated point. We're supportive of conservation. Nobody, nobody's against conservation.
Well, we were, we were saying these four concepts before they were saying those four concepts. We had our plan out before they had their plan out.
We, we need something that encourages conservation, that makes sense at the local level. You know, what, what, the type of projects, the type of efforts we have to conserve water up here is going to be totally different than, you know, a, a highly dense population center like Los Angeles or the Bay Area, which is totally different.
And turning our town into a tinderbox is the answer.
You, you don't remember all the fires in Southern California? In the Santa Monica Mountains, every three years, thousands of acres burn up, and it's an urbanized, rural thing?
That's more wind, that's more wind-driven. That's a, that's a wind-driven thing more than a, here, it's just got to come up the canyon wall.
Very similar to what we have here, only a different climate. They don't get as much rainfall, so they can't grow as much as wood. And Dan would like us to go on to something else, I think.
No, it's not really something else. I just wrote a couple of questions down 20 minutes ago, but you guys have had a good time talking, so.
I'm trying, but I'm not, I looked at the clock, I'm losing.
Doing fine.
Well...
You partially answered one of them, and that is, when this goes to the governor in January 10, is he trying to rush something to the legislature so that they can immediately implement it, or is it going from his desk to the legislature to massage it, or you didn't really give an exact timeline?
Well, that was, that was actually a comment we made.
Yeah.
I, I don't recall the bill deadline. It's usually January or February is when every bill needs to be in.
Okay.
So, we're likely to see it in that timeframe.
Mm-hmm.
What we don't want to see happen is that it's some kind of budget trailer bill.
Right.
Which, if it's a budget trailer...
No options on it.
It gives you like two days to lobby, so you're, you're basically dead.
And then my second question was, working on the council for a number of years, whenever something came up like this, we had the League of California Cities, and all of us would have meetings periodically and pool our sources and have somebody that implemented this, you know, presented this to. But we don't really have this Aqua, it sounds like, is the nearest thing we...
That's our League of Cities, Association of California Water Agencies. And like we've said, they tend, they've, they're, a significant portion of their membership is probably supportive of this budget approach.
Yeah.
So, they're being a little weak.
Yeah, we don't always want...
So, the next one, then, just like you touched on, is the possibility of working in Congress with other agencies that are of similar size and quickly contact them, pool our resources, and have representation through that, then.
Yeah. Yeah, and I represent, the three I mentioned, well, the other two I mentioned, I represent.
Also.
So.
And just so you know, I have a pretty good relationship with Gallagher, so after the first of the year, I'm going to be setting up a meeting to make sure his office understands very well the situation that we're facing and dealing with.
Well, and Nielsen should help, and, and even if we have to shoot it on up the line, now it wouldn't hurt with LaMalfa to see what we can get from the feds. And, and again, in regards to that, what, what can, could happen? What is the potential for possible backing off of some requirements? Can California just go ahead and legislate, doesn't matter what the feds say, because they're independent?
That's a, that's a complex legal question. You have, California is, can be preempted by the federal government, but in matters of water, the federal government generally defers to the state.
State, that's right, yeah.
That, there's actually Supreme Court on that, Supreme Court case on that. But, yeah, that's the general rule. And I don't, you, you wonder with the new presidential, you know, federal administration coming in, what kind of things are going to happen? I, I think more in the delta, rather than something like this with, with the...
Small community, it's not a big deal.
Yeah. But it'll be interesting to see if, if the feds start flexing a little more muscle on California water law and not deferring so much to the state. It's possible.
Can we get the, get them to pay for our Magalia Dam, so we can store more water for them?
That's something that we, we, the board, need to be talking about, some, agendize and visit, yeah.
I mean, if there's federal money there to raise that water level, so that we have more water to give to them when they ask for it.
Well, let's, let's, we've talked enough, I think. That's getting off on another subject, and I threw in the Santa Monica Mountains, thinking, tell me that's enough talking for the night about this issue. But it does says action may be taken. Is there any action that the board wants to do?
Well, I, I gave you our draft letter, or our letter, comment letter. So, the action was if you, as a board, wanted to add any more points, or...
It's already gone out, though, hasn't it?
It has gone out, but our comments are going to be continuing through the process, so this helps me make sure I'm speaking with you guys.
That being the case, let's table it till next month, and we'll keep going, because you've already sent the letter out, I don't know what...
Yeah, I thought we had to approve it before you sent it.
So...
Okay. I thought the letter, too. I agree with Cliff, the letter was good. I wish that we could have pounded harder, but you can't do, you can't pound too hard, so, got to be careful.
Okay, the next thing on the public?
Public.
Public? Anybody in the public have anything to say? Of course, Lauren, and we've got our two...
Yes, thank you.
Public members here.
A couple of things. Good evening, board. Ward Haverill again. This is an area, you know, that's been very personal with me. My background as a conservationist and my interest in resource conservation, especially water, has been one of my primary activities over the last several years, and even up to the point when Director Corolla asked me if I'd be interested in serving on a conservation committee, which I agreed to. And as you know, I travel a lot, and I like talking to people. And when I'm gone, I find people either in agriculture, in a tasting room, well, not in a tasting room, of course I do, but also people who are interested in what their city or their community is doing, and how they've done it and done it well. And I like to brag about what we have done and what we have done well. And frankly, sometimes people, they really draw answers out of me of what we've done, because we've done pretty well. We have met our conservation goals. And frankly, you know, when you do that, you do get some reputation for that. There are some other communities that have done that well, too, some bigger than us, some smaller. But for the most part, in Northern California, we're like one of the leaders. Not everybody knows that, but I don't mind bragging about it. But I also like sharing what it is that we've done. And then just as much as that, I like finding places where they have done well, and try and pick up from them what they've done, and then bring that to share with you. I've done that recently, and I would like to share their flyer with the director in charge of water conservation, who may share it with all of you, and then pass it along to George, and maybe to our Cedar Creek people, where we get very good publicity. But the efforts are, how do we get back to the people when we start changing the plan? And, you know, I would like to say that we're going to educate them, some of you prefer would hear me say, we're going to inform them. But what we've done in the past is only one of those steps. We need to look further and see what else it is that we can do that brings more information to every single customer of PID, to see why we know this is important. It's not just another law. Why we know this is important, and how we can make it work in our community. These examples from this water district have received a lot of positive feedback, according to the gal at the desk I was talking to. And she says their publications that they have provided, either through bills, public service, TV, radio ads, and public demonstrations, sort of what we've done as party in the park, have been very meaningful to their community. They've been educated, and they have followed through, and they have met commitments. So, I thought, I'll bring that back, and I will share that, as I continue to pursue some other things. I think, you know, too, that a lot of people will give me feedback, and they'll say, I don't want to go to the meeting, would you say? And I'll say, sure, but I think you should be there. And of course, in the last couple of years, we've had more people in the audience here, and frankly, I think that's good. It's not as good as we can do. We need to still do better to get to our community and do more, so that more of our community is aware of how good this whole agency is, and what it is that we're going to be doing in the future. I have two minutes left?
Yeah.
Okay. What we're going, what we're going to be doing in the future. The time to plan for that is soon, not after we have a new law pushed down our throats. And I think we need to be looking at what Cedar Creek can do for us, what the Water Conservation Committee can do for us, and what other agencies that we can draw from can do for us, so we get to that point where it's not difficult for us to get to PID consumers and say, hey, guess what we can do next? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ward. Lauren?
Thank you, Ward. Lauren Harvey. I'd like to remind the board that conservationists are exactly like the government. They never have enough money, the government, conservationists never short us enough. If they, if they take away, if they cause you to hop on one shoe, on one foot, to save a shoe, in two years, they'll want you to tiptoe on that so you can save the heel of that shoe, and if they're, if they're able to do that, they'll want you to fly, so your shoe doesn't touch the ground, so they don't have to manufacture a shoe. So, let's not forget that first. Now, to the point, I think we ought to be lobbying the state that we're exempt from the rule, and the reason we're exempt is real simple. We're in a high-fire danger. We, we, we're the largest community that still has septic tanks. Those septic tanks feed the landscape, we all know that. Excuse my voice, I got a little cold. But we all know the, the, the septic tanks feed the landscape, which, which helps with the fire prevention. So, those two things coupled with the fact that the, the residents of Paradise paid for the dams, we paid for all the water facilities that are here, the res, the people paid for it, not the state of California, we paid for it. And so, I think we should be exempt solely on the, on the, I think we should go for it and ask for an exemption, because we're a high-fire community. If we cut down the water use too much, look around now, at how many yards are dead? Think about if that fire would have come up from Chico now. Think about that. And so, if we, if we cut our water down to the houses, they're going to cut their water down to their septic tanks, that's going to cut the water down to the landscaping, and so I think we have a legitimate argument. Thank you.
Thanks for keeping it short, Lauren. Any more commentary?
I think our new motto should be, we've done so much with so little for so long, we now can't be impossible with nothing.
State of Jefferson is looking better, better all the time, isn't it?
Committee, committee reports is the next thing, and Water Conservation Committee, which I'm the chair of, and Larry, too. And I'm glad of George's report, because we, he talked to us about the conservation framework at the meeting, so we don't have to go there anymore. And we talked about demonstration gardening and landscaping, and we found, I found a gal that works at Mendon's, she used to work for Barry at Paradise Garden Center, and she's very knowledgeable. And Mr. Mendon, Jerry Mendon, was very glad to loan us to the member of a subcommittee, provided a detailed list, plant material and so forth. George was so impressed, he asked her to put together a PID webcast thing for planting these different shrubs and plants. And we're working on coming up with a list out there, trails and sprinklers, and one of the persons on the committee has, will help with demonstration irrigation system, and this is all on something that's 30 by 80 feet in a triangle, so we're going to have all this stuff there, hopefully making sense by spring. So, that was it. Larry, you have any comments you want to add to it?
No.
Okay, that takes care of that one. And general manager report again, but I looked at your report, I don't think there's anything left to talk about, is there?
I have a couple of things to add, if I may, that I, I need to cover. One is in direct response to Director Wentland. It's the only part of the conference I'll talk about. You guys can all ask me more if you want, but the question was asked about the Trump administration relieving the Endangered Species Act for the Delta smelt, et cetera, to make things easier. And the person that answered it was a very interesting map he put on, and he showed endangered species in the United States. And Hawaii's got 320, California's got 100, however many we have. In the rest of the country, most every other state, 1, 0, 1, 0. So, his point was that federally, dealing with the Endangered Species Act is not a high priority, because it doesn't impact anyone but California and Hawaii and maybe Florida. So, that may answer what your question was a little bit. I have a couple of things I'll, I'll hand out to you. I don't need to do it right now, and folks in the audience can have it. Our strategic business plan, which is what I worked with the board to develop, which gives me my marching orders as to what we want to accomplish in the future. Last update was 2012, 2017, it's time to update it. So, I want to hand it out to, to the board members and the folks in the public, so you know, you know that this is coming up. So, in February, March, we're going to have a board session. It's going to take a little while to get the direction for PID for the next five years, and, and this will give you a guide of, of what we've dealt with in the past, so you can work with me to help tell us what our goals and direction is going forward. The last thing I really want to cover is with this legislation we're dealing with, with the process water recycle and all of these, these things going on, I felt it was necessary to step down from the Water Commission. Been on the Water Commission 11 years, so I've had a meeting with Doug Teeter about that, and he was asking me who, if I had somebody in mind that may be interested. I spoke to Jim Passanese about it. He's worked with committees like this, he understands the issues. He understands the issues. He'd be a very passionate person. He would really like that opportunity to be considered by Doug Teeter. So I want to bring that up and kind of get a nod from the Board if you're supportive of that going forward where Jim could, to take my seat on the Water Commission if Teeter agrees to it, which I'm sure he will, so that I can bring my focus back to here. Initially, it was one meeting a month. The longer you're there, the more senior you are. I got pulled into committees and helping them select consultants and the time commitment has continued to grow a little bit. So it's time for me to step back and refocus at PID. So can I get a nod of heads? Do you guys like the idea of Jim Passanisi being considered for that position?
I do not.
You do not?
I do not. He loses his temper, he's got the personality. I can go deeper, that's deep enough, but I don't think he should be there, not from PID, no. Anybody else's comment?
I don't know him, but is he willing to be vocal and express himself? Does he have the ability to explain what his, whatever it is he's trying to present?
Yes. I believe so.
I don't know. Now, were there, there was more than one position open, is that correct?
Well, Director Jacobson put in for the opening for surface water. My position is the one Teeter gets to choose, so there's no competition there. I'm open.
I'd be there to work with.
It's not going to change the situation.
Obviously, he agrees to it. He would agree to it.
Oh, yeah.
You want to talk about it in closed session, I'll talk to you. But otherwise, I've made all the comments I'm going to make.
Yeah, if, since there's not unanimous consensus, I'll reconsider and if I bring, I can.
I have no problem with it.
No, but I'll bring it as a formal agenda item if I decide to go that direction.
Would, he would be, would that be at his own or would that be as a paid employee?
It'd be on PID time because the meetings are Wednesdays at 1:30 in the afternoon.
Where?
At Butte County.
Chico.
Chambers.
Orville.
Yeah, Orville, the Board of Supervisors chambers.
So it wouldn't be extra hours, it would be during his normal working hours.
I'll bring it up as an agenda item and I'll talk to Teeter. Maybe he's found someone else by now also.
Okay.
And that's, I think, all the things I needed to hit. You have my written report, and I'll answer any questions.
Is this Presidential, President Special Recognition Award, is that part of your report or is it the staff report?
That's filler paper.
That's, that's just a, it's part of my report, but we just wanted you to be aware.
Well, I think the public should know about it, too.
It's up there. That's from our insurance authority.
Which affects our workman's corporate. Is there anything more you want to share tonight, Dustin? It says legal report now.
If I may, I have three topics, I'll try to be brief.
Do you have questions from the public on the manager's report?
No.
Okay. I'm sure you've read in the newspaper, the federal government has passed a drought bill. A significant portion of it addresses California issues. It's very interesting, this is maybe the Trump effect. The, this, a bill like this has sat at the federal level for about three years. And then President Trump gets elected and it takes him two weeks to get the bill ironed out and President Obama signs it. It's unbelievable. I'm still going through it, it's pretty lengthy. My, what I've gone through so far, I don't see anything that either helps or hurts PID, but I will continue my review and I'll bring that up again in January if I do find something.
What was tagged on to that, at the state level, on that federal bill? Wasn't there some California legislation that was?
Yeah, Feinstein got some things tagged on. And I'm digging through them. First glance, there may be grant programs we can apply for. There isn't a ton of money, so it would be competitive.
There's about $515 million allocated for California and I think about $400 and something goes to Tahoe. So there's not a lot of money out there.
That means we get $300.
Was that something, was that something he's doing unilaterally or is it a legislative thing that's been sitting there way for him to sign or is it?
Oh, President Obama has signed it. It's now, well, I don't know if it's in effect yet, it may be a January 1 bill, but it's done, it's a done deal.
I can add one benefit that I read and I haven't really dug deep, but on the federal level, oftentimes for you to get grant funds to the Bureau of Rec or Agency, you have to be named in legislation as a project. And Feinstein put in a wrinkle in there where apparently you don't have to. And I'm not sure if that only applies to the money in this bill or if that's a more widespread application to those grant programs. And that's, it will take me some time to try and figure that out. That would be a big win for us if, in fact, it covers all the grants.
Second, the Water Fix Update. The case in chief phase, remember, we're divided into phases here. We're in Part 1. That was further divided into Part 1A and 1B. Part 1B is now complete. Now we're going to transition, I think, probably in January or February to what's known as rebuttal. That's where all the parties that disagree with what other parties put on evidence can then submit rebuttal evidence. I don't anticipate, I think the only folks that will submit rebuttal evidence will be the two, the state and then the reclamation that are in favor of the project. So then, that then leads me to what I suspect will be a surrebuttal phase. So it's rebuttal of the rebuttal. That's where we go back in and have to rebut the evidence that the projects have put forward. So it's slowly kind of proceeding here. Remember, there's still a Phase 2 out there that may not be until mid to late 2017. The last topic I have is a test claim update. I think I mentioned this last month. We finished our brief, we're in the appellate court, and it's available, it's a public document if anybody's interested in seeing it. The update I have is we're starting to secure amicus briefs. That's friends of the court. It's, and we're getting it from the likes of League of Cities. Aqua has agreed to support us, California Special District Association. And we're trying to get the sanitation district, I don't, are they called CASA? Something like that? Yeah. So in any event, we're trying to get all of these statewide organizations that represent public agencies across the state to support friendly briefs that are supportive of our arguments. And so far, we've got two commitments and I think we might end up with all four of those statewide agencies supporting us. So that, too, is going to continue on into 2017. We will likely have the case fully briefed in approximately April, May time period. And there's current, there's a backlog currently in the appellate court. Once it's fully briefed, we may be a year, 18 months before we actually get an oral argument and a decision. So there will be further, I'll have further updates on that as we move forward into next year. So unless there's questions, that's, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Saying Merry Christmas.
Great year. Thank you.
Does the Board have any questions, Dustin? The public have any questions, Dustin? Okay. We jump, I find this sort of curious. We have staff report on field operations, the water use and everything else, but we don't have it agenda sized. I'm going to make the point of one thing in here, mainly for our new reporter, that we have over two years of water supply in our reservoirs. There's no drought in Paradise. And there's all sorts of information in here, fees, so forth, but we're going to skip over it since it's not on the agenda and should be on there next month.
What's that?
What's not on the agenda?
The water supply is under the General Manager and then the staff and billing reports are next on the agenda.
Under legal report.
Under legal report.
Staff and billing.
Next one.
Billing reports, staff report, billing report.
There's your water right here on the screen.
Okay.
Go back to that screen.
The water supply is under General Manager.
Go back to that screen you had just a couple of seconds ago. If you look up in the upper right corner here, full reservoir supply is 27.6 months of supply remaining. So that was included in there.
But keep in mind, this chart is December 1st. So from December 1st to last Friday, we went from 23.2 to 27.6 because we're now full in.
But the information is there and this is agendized as a staff and billing report.
This is the General Manager's report.
It's part of the General Manager's.
This was, yes.
Anyway, we didn't go over it. And so the next thing is the Treasurer's Report.
No, it's staff and billing.
Staff and billing reports.
14A and B.
14A. Okay. Directors, you have any comments on staff and billing?
Was there anything that they wanted to comment on? I'll make a motion that we accept the staff and billing reports as presented.
Second. Any more chance for comments on it?
I've got questions, but I'm just going to cover them when I go talk to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question?
Public.
Pardon?
Public.
Public? Any comments? No? Okay. Question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, Kevin?
You have my written report. We're currently at $2.1 million of cash reserve. I'll talk into here. Again, I'll point out that our debt service, we're over almost 100%, we're about, 75% of our debt service has been paid already and we're only six months into the fiscal year. Operation standpoints, we're, expense wise, we're right on budget. Consumption revenue is still trending below what we had estimated. So we'll see how this low, our low use months trend out based on our estimates from the prior, prior usage. And so I'll kind of focus on that. And so here's our, here's what we estimated and where we're lacking. But you can see that November was right on our budget, our budgeted actual. So we'll see what December, December will kind of really tell us if we're going to trend over that or not, based on that we're really estimating a low consumption revenue for that, for December. So we'll see how that kind of comes about. Any, any questions?
Did you want to clarify? Comment, please?
Oh, yeah. And just to let you know, on the retirement side, I negotiated the fees, but I never saw what the fees were charged on each individual account because that was all proprietary to the individual itself. Those are not reports that we get here in-house. So those are confidential reports. So it's something that I can actually calculate because I never saw what the actual fee was. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report as presented.
Second. Any more questions since we've got a second and a motion? Anything from the public? Any questions? Ms. Reed.
I just had a question for Kevin Phillips regarding the conference that you went to December 12th through 14th. Do you have a report on that for anyone?
Yeah, so it's a government tax update and so I go to it almost every year due to the fact that what it does is it updates you on all of the payroll tax, healthcare tax, employee benefits and different things like that. So I did attend that. The most of the stuff was based on estimations of what's going to be coming forward into the future, which a lot of it is unknown based on the new administration. So a lot of it is known what's going to happen if nothing changes, meaning the Cadillac tax is going to be in effect, the taxes associated with fringe benefits are continuing to. They're loosening it up a little bit, but they're actually, there's loosening on certain sides and they're becoming a lot more stringent on others, being that they're out there auditing a lot more of that stuff. But the biggest thing is that what this administration that's going to be coming into office, what that's going to change. There was a lot of speculation out there. And a lot of the speculation is rolling back the Obamacare, taking, and not rolling it all the way back and undoing the whole thing, but taking restrictions away from some of the, of what they put and implemented on to the insurance companies of what they must do and what the effects of that might be. And the effects would be that, according to their crystal ball, would be that actually lower, they could actually lower the healthcare cost that has been passed on to the consumer. So the biggest thing that I will receive out of it actually is that this company gives you ongoing updates as the laws change. And so as the laws change, I'll be receiving those updates on their, on the law and the interpretation of the law. What we've seen in the past is when administrations come in, they might not put a law until March, it might pass, but a lot of times they can make that retroactive all the way back to the first of the year. So that, that's, that was probably the most beneficial thing out of it, is going to be the ongoing updates from this current year going forward.
Okay. Then the other question I had, you have another training coming up with the GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association. Is that an organization that the agency is a member of?
Yes. So we're a member of that agency and the acronym is, it stands for Government Finance Officers Association. And so it's the largest finance, Government Finance Officers Association in probably the world. But it covers special districts, cities, counties, states, it all. And they throw an annual conference every year. And I feel it's one of the most beneficial conferences, not only from the training you receive, but it's beneficial from the connections you make with other government finance officers that you can bounce ideas off. And then the vendors there to get, to make connections with those vendors to see what's out there, but also to kind of make personal connections with them. So if there was a product that we wanted to go out and make a proposal on, a lot of times we're getting better pricing because of that connection.
Is this not where we found Tyler Technologies when you were there three, four years ago?
Yeah, so we made a connection with Tyler Technologies and I feel, I feel that relationship really saved us a lot of money, so.
Yeah, another question is, do you get CPF credits for this?
Yeah, so both of these actually give me CPE, so.
And that benefits you then, too, for what you need to do for being in your position.
Correct. So yeah, so I'm required to have 80 hours every two years and so this goes to those 80 hours.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Good questions.
And just so, and just so that the public knows, when Kevin's at these conferences, I think you were somewhere New York or somewhere, because this conference moves from year to year.
San Antonio.
San Antonio, okay. Anyway, what was it, two, three hour time difference here? We were here at 11 o'clock at night, Kevin's there at 1 o'clock at night and he was answering questions via the phone.
That's right.
That we had. So he doesn't stop working for us. Usually these dates fall on about the third week of the month, almost always. And so Kevin's still there answering questions for us even in the wee hours. It seemed like you were somewhere farther back east where it was almost a three or four hour time difference.
Two hour time difference, but I had to get up and catch a plane like at 7:00 and it was like 1:00 by the time, and we were doing, it was negotiations.
It was very late at night for Kevin.
Negotiations, I remember that.
We appreciate him getting on the phone and answering the questions that we had during that meeting, so.
Davis Grunske loan, we're going to make the last payment first of.
It's been made. It's been made.
It's been made so we don't owe them any money and it was a 40-year note, right?
Yeah. And that was, that was the one that, and this is actually going to benefit all the people of Paradise because it was paid through property tax. So they'll no longer have to pay that in their property tax statements.
Oh, everybody gets a break.
Everybody gets a break, yes.
The PID thing's going to go away.
That's right.
Okay, well, that's good news.
Yes.
And it's director's comments now unless somebody else has some questions of Kevin. And we have a motion to approve Kevin's report by Seth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And director's comments. Start with Dan. Start with Dan.
It's nice to be here, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for being here, Dan. Larry?
Welcome aboard, Dan.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm glad you're here.
Well, I'll also extend a welcome to Dan and welcome back to Director Jacobson, who I'm there. And it was a very nice meeting, end of the year.
Merry Christmas.
I didn't have to run it, so.
Merry Christmas.
That was...
I forgot Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas to everybody.
I'd like to make a comment that it was very informative to me to see the employees all here in force, asking that we, as board members, help them in an issue that they felt was important. And it was also enlightening to see that the two gentlemen that were here, in my opinion, downplayed everything that was happening, and had not one of the employees stood up and said, "Well, this has actually happened more than one time," we would have assumed it was one grievous error, but apparently there were more than one. And I think that the most important thing that we can do is be supportive of the employees that we ask to run this organization. And so I don't think it's up to us to decide whether or not these gentlemen are good for them or bad. I think it's up to them to decide who they want.
Well, it is actually up to us, but... Well, it is up to us to make a finding that keeps them happy and lets them know that they're recognized and valued, and so I think that's probably the most important thing is that they feel like they have their say in, that they got justice, so that's all I would say.
The last time I ran this board, some, many years ago, I missed a meeting coming back when it was rotation time for me to be president, and I'd never was president again. You got a taste of it tonight on how I run meetings, and at that time, the board didn't want me back anymore, so. One thing, I hope you can't fire me before the end of the year on the way I run meetings, so. We're going home before 10 o'clock, fellas. I met that part of the goal. Everybody have a good Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Yeah, Merry Christmas, all.
Yes.
Thank you.
Frank?
You forgot to pound your hammer, it's over.